Commission meeting to order, and I think we're ready to start the introductory video. If we're still doing that. Are we still doing that?
No, it hasn't been up.
Okay. Okay, people have been busy. All right, we're just gonna move ahead. If it starts rolling, we'll hush, but otherwise, let's just move on. I thank you all for being here this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we hold our commission meeting this evening, our community, our country, and nations across the world are facing a historic challenge. In the past week, formal health emergencies have been issued by the state of North Carolina, Buncombe County, and for our country. All public schools have been closed, and today, all restaurants have been ordered closed as well, except for takeout services and deliveries. COVID-19 presents a health threat greater than any other that we have faced since the influenza pandemic of 1918, 100 years ago. As sobering as these realities are, I am heartened by the great work already being done and carried out by the dedicated professional staff here in Buncombe County, in our Health Department, Emergency Services, from our public schools, and all of our other public staff who are rising to this moment and doing what needs to be done. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's hold a moment of silence to recognize and offer a silent prayer for all the people in local government, as well as throughout our community who are working hard to help Buncombe County get through this unique challenge. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we have a couple of announcements before we get started. Actually, first, let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." Okay, we come to the agenda, and there's a couple of items that we need to add and a couple that need to be taken off. The staff have requested that we add two new business items to the agenda. First, designating deputy finance officers, and second, suspending certain policies during local state of emergency. There's some materials that have been given to each of us about each of these two items. Is there any objection to adding these two items for consideration this evening? All right, by unanimous consent, those will be added. And then, two items, which we can remove from the agenda first. We had consideration of an emergency declaration on the agenda from when we scheduled the meeting more than a week ago, but as things were unfolding, as Chair, I made the decision to go ahead and issue the emergency declaration on Thursday. So there's no need for the emergency declaration. It's been in effect since then. So we can remove that item. And we also, you know, in the spirit of not holding public forums that are likely to draw large crowds, we also decided to defer for now discussion about the hotel occupancy policy, an issue of a lot of community interests, but we felt like we need to have that discussion, but now's not the right time to do it in this type of format. So could I have a motion to add the two new business items just mentioned and to remove the emergency declaration, occupancy and occupancy tax, but to otherwise approve the consent agenda and follow the remainder of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, under Presentations, our first item is...
I apologize.
I'm sorry, did we need to remove another... Were some of these other items planned to not go ahead and...
Yes, the presentation, we won't do that tonight.
Okay, we're not gonna do the Sports Commission presentation. Okay, that's fine. We are doing an update on the COVID-19 work, so let's go ahead and start there. And I believe Dr. Mollendorf is here to get us started. Thank you so much for being with us, Dr. Mollendorf.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us. So we just wanted to do a big-picture overview of the work we've been doing related to COVID-19. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. Maybe. Or not. So... Oh, because I wasn't grabbing this, you know. There we go. So this is just a slide to give you a brief overview of the status in the country that shows that over 3,500 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the U.S. As of this morning, 40 cases in North Carolina. And at this time, we know of one case of COVID-19 associated with a traveler, an out-of-state traveler, who visited Asheville late last week, March 10th through 13th. We have conducted our case investigation. We've notified all the close contacts, and those people have been issued their quarantine orders and their guidance for what to monitor for and how to reach out to the appropriate Communityal Z staff or healthcare provider should they develop symptoms. And so again, if individuals have not been contacted by our staff, they are not considered a close contact and do not need to take any action beyond what we are telling the general public. In terms of testing, today was the first day that we offered community testing in Buncombe County, led by Buncombe County Health and Human Services. We had two test sites, and actually, they're still going on as we speak. So we have our test site at Biltmore Church at 35 Clayton Road in Arden, and as of 5:00 PM, they've conducted 28 tests. They've seen more people than that, but they're screening people, making sure they have symptoms or mainly symptoms of COVID-19 and meet the criteria for testing. And then, the other site is at UNCA, and they've conducted 60 tests. And it sounds like things are going smoothly at both sites. As long as we have testing supplies, those sites will remain open until 6:00 PM today, and then we'll reopen tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. And in terms of the number of testing sites elsewhere in the county, I know that our Communityal Z nurses have done 12 tests so far since this started, and I would say, community providers have probably done over 80 tests. So there are lots of opportunities in our community, it looks like, for people to obtain testing if they meet criteria. So again, I encourage people, if they have a healthcare provider and they have symptoms, so fever and cough or difficulty breathing, they need to call their healthcare provider first. If they don't have a healthcare provider, then they can certainly come to one of our community testing sites or go to an urgent care. And then, if they don't, again, if they have questions or concerns, they can call the state hotline, or they can call our Communityal Z staff. So we're getting a lot of calls, so I encourage people to be mindful and make sure that they're calling the appropriate location or reaching out to the appropriate location for additional information.
Good evening. Fletcher Tove, Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. I just want to step through a quick timeline of what's happened since Thursday, when we declared a local state of emergency. So on Friday, we established our partial emergency operations center. On Saturday, Governor Cooper, via executive order, closed schools statewide for two weeks. On Sunday, we convened an emergency planning committee at our EOC to help assist Buncombe County, Buncombe County and city school systems preparing for that closure. Monday, we fully activated our emergency operations center, and today, we continued operations. And as this afternoon, Governor Cooper issued another executive order restricting bars and restaurants to, from sit-down service, limiting them to only to take out to-go or pickup service. We continue operations with our EOC. In the two days it's been fully activated, we've made a lot of ground, covered a lot of ground, making some really great progress. What we're looking at next is drafting supplemental orders for the Governor's executive order locally to look at closing and restricting gyms, pools, spas, entertainment venues, and any other social setting where groups could potentially congregate within six feet for extended period of time and meet our close-contact criteria.
Great. Any questions? So there have been media advisory events held at noon for the last couple of days, increasing from the previous schedule of the once-a-week events that have been held for the last couple of weeks. Is it the staff's intent to continue the noon briefings? I think they've been, they've been very well received. They've gotten lots of positive feedback from members of the community about how substantive and informative they have been. So what's the, what is the plan for kind of community updates going forward?
Yes, sir. So we will continue to have those midday noon media availabilities. Starting Thursday, those will be virtual format, so we won't be no longer having those in this room, but they'll be virtual. We're increasing our capacity to push that out to media and the public in real time, but those will continue throughout this whole endeavor.
Okay, and there'll be opportunities for the public to also watch those events through Facebook Live or other social media forums and on the county website afterwards?
Yes, sir. So I know currently, we've been doing Facebook Live. All these are posted retroactively to YouTube and the county and city social media accounts. Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioners, yes, sir.
I'd like to say something. In my time as a public safety official in this county, I've had the opportunity to work with the county staff, mainly the emergency management side and then the budget side, but the last two days, I've actually been sitting over there in the EOC, helping train our staff in the incident management team. And I just want to say how appreciative I am of this staff of Buncombe County. You folks are great, and to put in the hours you're putting in to make sure that we're doing what is right and what's best for our citizens, I'm very proud to say I am a Buncombe County resident, knowing that we have that type of leadership and that type of commitment in a room that can come together for the betterment of the citizens. When you think of government, a lot of people think of elected officials. When I think of government, it's the men and women who live this every day. They go to work for this county, and they are making decisions. And to hear today that we are ahead of the curve with some of our other counties as far as our unified command system and all that, it is great. Some of these folks, it was new as to how this works, but they've sit there and they've went to training, and I want to say thank you personally. I pray every night that something's gonna happen to this, and this is gonna get away from our country. But I'm also gonna pray every night for the people who serve our citizens, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you who's been sitting in that room. And I will be, won't be there tomorrow, but I will be there Thursday and Friday right there with you again. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Any other questions? At this time, we're gonna be discussing a budget amendment to provide additional resources for county responses to COVID-19 later in the meeting, so I'm sure we'll have some more discussion at that time about next steps. But thank you all for being here and for all your terrific work. Okay. We don't have any other presentations, so our next item is a public hearing, a resolution authorizing to refund overpayment of excise taxes in the city of Asheville. And Mike Free will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This should be fairly simple. The city of Asheville inadvertently paid $950 in excise tax when they closed and sold a piece of property off Hilliard Avenue near Klingman, and the closing attorney, just as a matter of course, deducted the excise tax from the city's half of the ledger. Cities and counties don't pay excise tax, so they would like that back, and the Board of Commissioners is authorized to refund an overpayment of excise tax following a hearing. And that's what we're here for this evening.
All right, fantastic. I'm gonna open the public hearing at 5:22 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment during the public hearing? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 5:23 PM. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Ms. Pender, are any other items under County Manager Report?
I do have one.
Sure.
On our pre-meeting schedule for earlier today that we canceled, I had a presentation on paid family leave. That right now is very appropriate at this time. I'd like to ask Sharon Burke or Human Resources to come and just present that in abbreviated form for you to understand what we're looking at.
Sure.
And if you want to give us guidance, we can start out earlier. We were actually planning to do this in July, but we would love for you to consider this and give us opportunity to do that.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Come on up.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Can you hear me? Sure. All right, so let's see here. I want to start off, I want to make sure that everyone is at the same level when we talk about family medical leave or the Family Medical Leave Act. So if you bear with me, I'm just gonna do some recap first, and then I'll take you forward. So when we look at family medical leave, covered employees begin with those employers that have more than 50 employees. Those employees need to have been an employee for more than one year for the employer, and they need to have worked in the last 12 months at least 1,250 hours. If they've done all that, then what the paid family or the Family Medical Leave Act does is it provides job protection for those employees. It is unpaid right now for 12 full weeks, and they can take those 12 full weeks either in a continuous bank, or it can be done intermittently throughout the, a rolling calendar or a fixed period. There we go, sorry. So what I'd like to introduce is, what is paid family leave? Paid family leave is simply, it's compensation that would be provided to an employee while they are caring for a serious medical condition of a dependent, whether that be a husband, spouse, wife, or a birth of a child or an adoption. So this isn't, this isn't unique to Buncombe County. This actually started a little over, almost a year ago or so. The state of North Carolina, the Office of Personnel, they actually in September opted to put in a parental leave program, and here's the information on that. And they're basically offering eight weeks for the birth of a child and four weeks for bonding with a newborn, for an adoption, I should say. Then the federal government, back in December, they actually enacted, basically, it's paid family leave for all events. And so that would be birth, adoption, as well as caring for a family member, as well as caring for oneself. North Carolina counties that participate in some sort of paid family leave, and you'll see that they're in different increments. Cities that participate in paid family leave? States, oh my goodness, I just saw a typo. States that participate in paid family leave, and you'll see that even some states, like in New York, they offer a very nice package, however, it's only at half the rate. So what I'm proposing to you today is the ability for us to enhance our current policy in the ordinance that would allow us to offer six weeks for paid family leave, and that would include providing 100% of the employee's salary for those six weeks, either intermittently or in a continuous block. The employee must at least meet those qualifying events, meaning that they have to have been an employer, employee for at least 12 months. That period of time cannot exceed in regards to paid family leave for more than six weeks. However, after six weeks, the employee can use their sick time or any other paid available time off that they have. And during the time that they're receiving paid family leave, they cannot augment their pay to get additional compensation by using their sick time or their vacation or anything else like that. So they would just be basically receiving their full compensation. It is important that I let you know that there is a potential long-term cost for this. Okay, so we are looking at offering six weeks, which would be 6,400, 6,400, I'm sorry, 647,251, and that is projected. And what we did was we looked at 2019 figures, and so assuming that every year is exactly like 2019, this could potentially be what our liability would be. However, I'd like you to consider, if we use, or if we put this policy together and we used intermittent leave and continuous block, so we give the employee the flexibility of caring for their family member, however they need to care for that family member, we also allow that family member, and some of the other policies that we researched, one of the things that we found was that some of the policies only allowed for one family member. I ask that you allow that employee to have some flexibility. So if they need to care for a child, they can take, you know, they can care for the child, or if they need to care for an elderly parent, they also have that ability too, all within those six weeks. Okay, they would not exceed those six weeks, I should say. And then, what I'd ask is that you allow me to revise our vacation policy, and this would help mitigate some of those expenses I just mentioned a few minutes ago. Right now, our policy allows employees to cash out or sell, cash out if they leave employment or sell while they're still working. And if they're using the paid family leave benefit, what I'd like to do is put a hold, a temporary hold on their ability to sell or cash out during that, that one year after the family medical payout or a family, paid family benefit is being used. And while I did say I'd like to have this effective July 1st, when I created this, it was way before COVID, and so, you know, I think, you know, in the circumstances that are happening right now, if you would consider, you know, making it effective sooner than that, that would, that would be great.
All right, thank you so much for the information. Is there anything else you wanted to share right now?
No, it's just, my conclusion is just that when you look at paid family leave, one of the benefits for paid family leave is it really does help our employees. You know, they are more invested, and, you know, when you're looking at being a leader in Buncombe County, this just makes sense.
All right, thank you very much.
Questions?
And we're not, we're not gonna obviously vote on this tonight. This is sort of starting this conversation, so thank you for great information.
I just had a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. This is helpful and builds on probably about three years of working to this moment, so that's very exciting. I had a quick question, perhaps not for tonight. I know we're trying to move forward, but as we move forward in this discussion, if we might just have some presentation about the, whatever data might exist about the, essentially, the benefits that an employer realizes through the employee retention and recruitment that a policy like this would enable us to do. So we can certainly look at the projected price tag on the one side, but if there's any kind of projections around what we might also save in terms of the quality of candidates we could attract and retain, that would, I think, just be helpful as we think about this. But I'm personally just very excited to see this, generally speaking, but it also couldn't be more timely. I know a lot of Buncombe County employees are wrestling with exactly the same questions that everyone in our community is right now, which is how do we move forward during this time? And the more I think we can directly support our employees, but also help show what's possible in this moment, I think the better. So I personally would love for us to move forward as, in as expedited a fashion as we reasonably can, but look forward to hearing what other people have to say.
I have, I'm sorry. Commissioner White says, "I have a quick question for clarification. First, thank you for your time in putting this together. I'm excited that we're finally taking a look at it. I'm trying to figure out where the additional costs are coming from, because we're just paying people their normal salary, unless we're looking at the projected costs incurred coming from the fact that they're not taking unpaid leave."
So there is that, however, where the costs really are is that there's that selling piece in our vacation policy.
The selling piece.
So they could potentially, you know, take the time and then sell out a week or two, or if they were to leave, yes.
Thank you, Sharon.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'll be glad to add to that. So you are correct in that, in the current moment, or for the current budget, the salaries are budgeted. However, at the time that an individual would be taking leave, so they're taking their own leave, so it is decreasing the available balance, and so it becomes a deferred liability. So then it becomes a future liability for the organization, because they would have otherwise used their leave. Instead of doing that, it sits in their accrued balance. And so when, when an employee does exit the organization, we do pay out their remaining annual leave, comp time, or another category as banked leave. So it becomes a deferred liability for the organization.
Thank you.
Okay. A question I have is, maybe I misunderstood something. It said that we could go up to 12 weeks, right? Why are we not giving the full 12 weeks, rather than we're just giving half of that?
So, go ahead. What I was looking at was, what are the other counties? What are our peers doing? And, and looking at, you know, the average was about six weeks.
So the 12 weeks is FMLA, the federal rule. They still get 12 weeks. What we're saying, right now, those 12 weeks are unpaid unless they have time on the books. What we recommend is that we pay for half of that. They still get 12 weeks. They can take out, but we recommend we're gonna pay for six weeks.
Yeah, and I think that, one, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing, you know, where people are impacted is particularly on the lower pay scales where, I mean, they need that, I mean, you're trying to make a decision whether you take care of your child or, or you get the money.
Right.
And what I see that this does, I think six weeks is great. You know, it takes that anxiety away, allows them to be a better team member and a better, you know, parent or whatever the need is, so.
Right. It also increases the loyalty from the employee, you know, and when others are, when you're recruiting, you know, and they see that we have a paid family leave policy that won't interfere with, you know, their vacation, so they can still, you know, rest after, you know, caring for a baby or a parent. It's important. Thank you for your time.
All right, I just have one comment on it, since we're thinking about this. So, and these policies are independent, but they're kind of related to. So one of the things that I would speak up for, I'm very supportive of the paid family leave policy, and I'm happy to look at some of the details of that, because there is a range of different ways that could, you know, be set up. But just so I'm clear, is the recommendation on the ability to monetize your unused vacation days, could you clarify what the recommendation is on that? Is it to temporarily, just talk, talk me through on that? And just to be real upfront, I've always been in favor of getting rid of this. And because it does cost a lot of money, and to me, it's like, I think, creating a really, really good paid family leave policy is so much of a better policy than being able to just pay for unused vacation days, but, which also has a budget price for the county. So I think kind of creating this really generous, you know, supportive paid family policy, but looking at maybe, maybe not keeping the monetization of paid, of unused vacation days is something I'd be interested in considering as part of this discussion.
As part of this discussion, that is part of the budget, personal ordinance, and we are looking at a rewrite of the personal ordinance, and that we're going through those lists of things. What we were proposing tonight is if you do participate in the six weeks paid, you didn't turn turn around and sell that week vacation in that one-year period. So it was a temporarily restriction of it.
I guess, okay, so I guess I would just like to put on the table that as we look at all these different kind of personnel issues that we, we, I'm going to probably advocate for just discontinuing the whole pay for unused vacation days.
Right.
And maybe that frees up some more money to look at maybe adding a little more to this, or, or just takes into help, the, the, the kind of the, I mean, it could allow us to create a great paid family leave policy with perhaps a very little actual net physical cost to the county, but we want to look at all those numbers.
And, and to be clear, you did reduce, that was unlimited at one point, and last year you went to just one week they can sell. And, and so employees are using that, but not as much as it used to because it went away.
And, and so I would just ask that we kind of refresh all those numbers. When the interim county manager was here, George Wood, we did change the policy and I was supportive of it, but as I recall, at that time when we looked at it, the difference between just reducing it or discontinuing it was actually quite significant. And we, you know, so we could have saved quite a bit more money for other personnel benefits if we took that additional step. But let's just look at all the numbers again and make sure we're clear on what the cost really, really is.
And we will do that. When you did announce that you were going to trim back from unlimited, there was a rush, so to speak. So everybody went ahead, could sell, went ahead and did it at that time. So the difference is not as much anymore, but we will pull those numbers for you and bring those back to you.
Great.
Yeah, and from what I remember, you know, doesn't need to be part of this discussion because that discussion was a pretty brisk discussion, if I, if I remember it, and, but very supportive of what you're doing, sounds great.
And we will bring that back and clarify the budget impact is a deferred impact.
Good to get the numbers.
Right.
And I would also just give a shout out to my colleague here, Jasmine, for being a really consistent voice for this. So thank you for, thank you, you know, I mean, there's always a lot going on, resources are always finite, but thanks for continuing to just keep us looking at this and for other commissioners who've spoken up for it. But I'm glad we're, glad we're focused on it. All right, um.
When would you want us to bring that back? For the actual vote, or do we want it to be later as we look at all budget, our personal ordinances, or do you want to bring this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My thoughts would be, I think, I think we're trying to get away from doing personnel policies in the budget itself, right? So I'm definitely, you know, I think we should vote on it as a standalone matter. Both of these kind of issues are standalone matters that we've talked about. I do think that, well, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm open. I mean, I, I anticipate the next very short period of time in front of us is going to be very busy, right? So I don't want to pile on things that we could potentially take up a little bit later while we're maybe in kind of the, you know, the time that we need to be most focused on this COVID-19 response. But, but definitely before the budget's adopted. So that's kind of, that's kind of my high-level thoughts. Commissioners, y'all have any other thoughts on it?
So I, what I would say is that if it is, if you have the data, if you have the, the data and you can bring it back to us, I'd say this, I'd say the sooner the better would be my opinion, as long as you, you've already done the work. You know, it's one thing that we're talking about is the six weeks, you know, what you've presented tonight. I think we could probably, if, if you've already done the work, I think as far as us acting on it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't delay it. I would, I would do it.
If we, if you have in the coming near term or later term, if you've got the bandwidth to bring it forward, we're ready, it sounds like we're ready to talk about it. But if you need to hold in light of other things we might be handling, then we'll give you some discretion on that, it sounds like.
Right, that sounds, sounds right.
Great. And just, and also just so we're clear, this discussion doesn't change the fact that, that you as manager have taken steps now to allow county employees who are nonessential employees to work from home. If people have any health concerns, they should work from home. So we've instituted policies that are in effect right now that for all of our county employees, that allows them to work from home or to not work if they, if they can't in light of COVID-19. But that's kind of a temporary policy as we work through this situation, right? Okay, very good. Okay, um, all right, the next item on our agenda is under Old Business, and it's a discussion of the Medic Franchise Agreement, and Taylor Jones is going to give us an update on this item. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So we have reached a unified agreement with Medic and the CEO of Medic, Kermit Tully, and myself, to actually let the franchise agreement expire at the end of the month and then start working towards a convalescent franchise for the future. And he's going to put that forward to us at a later time, working with our medical control physician.
So that doesn't, that doesn't require any action tonight, I assume? This is just bringing it forward and that request, and which sounds good. And I appreciate you bringing it, bringing it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Taylor, excuse me, do we have a, a plan after April 1 to make up, I mean, how many calls did they run? Is there a plan to offset the?
So they were running about 200 calls a month. So when we started talking about that, what we're looking to do is bring up utilization of the fire departments more, have a higher concentration of the convalescent calls through Medic and actually do some roadside deployment and things like that here in the city as we look at, you know, everything that's going on now to actually kind of enhance and get that response out. And then we're going to ask the fire departments to go step up and provide some additional. But as we move forward, you know, there may be additional requests based on what we see and how this plan works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Great. All right, we come to new business. As we discussed at the beginning, we added two new items. Let's go ahead and take up the two new items first. The first is, let's talk about designating deputy finance officer.
As we know, there are requirements under General Statute 159 as far as what we have to do with pre- audits of contracts and all those sort of things. I've been up here and I've talked to you about this before. I am the finance officer. Jennifer Barnett is our only deputy finance officer that can do the same thing I do in my absence. In light of the declaration of this emergency and the potential that, one, both of us could be incapacitated, I thought it would be prudent to have a resolution that would be temporary during the emergency declaration to appoint a few more of my finance staff as finance officers. And those are listed out in the resolution by position. So it'd be the assistant finance officer, my business officer, the disbursement manager, my accounting and reporting manager, and my procurement manager. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the resolution.
Okay, all right, thank you, Don. Is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is the request to suspend certain policies during the local state of emergency, and Michael Free will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The Registered Deeds had a good idea about how to try to consolidate and pull in and make a skeleton crew in his office, and not just for the Registered Deeds office, but also to assist other line departments that are public-facing, also include tax. What is different about Registered Deeds is that administratively, the county manager can close public-facing areas of county facilities, but the Registered Deeds hours are set by the commissioners of any given county. So in this situation, we're doing several things. For about nine years now, there's been a policy in effect authorized by state law, the commissioners at the time approved, a, a policy whereby before any deed is recorded with the Registered Deeds, they have to go by the tax office and get a certification that the taxes, that no delinquent taxes on that parcel. So the idea here is to suspend that policy for the duration of the local declaration of state of emergency, just to allow the skeleton staff to work, to make it less, less legwork for people, and to promote online services and e-recording. As part of that, Mr. Reisinger has worked with our providers under e-recording, and they'll waive their normal fees and annual licenses to get that going, so it'll be easy to set up and easy to do. Most deeds and land records are now recorded in that fashion, and that will continue. The only thing that must be in-person are marriage licenses in his office, and this would also cover that. They need to call and make an appointment in advance, and they can come and get that done. The next item on here is daily deposits. The general statutes require that when there's cash on hand of 500, well, of any amount, that they be deposited daily into a financial institution. The statute allows the commissioners to waive that up to $500. So once you accumulate $500 in any point of cash collection in county business, then it would be required. Several years ago, this board approved the limit at $250,000, excuse me. The idea here is just to ask that that limit be increased to $500 per cash on hand, maintain the policies adopted by finance director, and just proceed on that basis. Again, just less foot traffic down to the bank and less work with the public. In line with what we're doing, maybe the most important part for the Registered Deeds is that this would, this resolution would close the in-person, would close the doors of the business for in-person traffic, except for the marriages, as I indicated. All others would be done through e-recording, online, and drop boxes. And Mr. Reisinger is here if there's any questions in particular, but that's the substance, just those three things for the duration of the emergency.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Free.
So I've got a couple of questions for the Registered Deeds, if you could come up. They're pretty simple, I think. So what, as far as like frequently asked questions, which I think a lot of people with, that are downtown will just kind of pop in and ask something, so is it, is that just available on the, online, or, or how would you be doing just frequently asked questions that people might?
Sure, well, thank you all for considering this. We appreciate you all doing everything you can to make things easier for, take care of staff and citizens right now. So if someone wanted to ask a question, we're now, we're now saying that you need to do that online or by telephone. We don't want your germs coming into the office, and we don't want to give you our germs.
Okay, so all of this will be out on our county, county website and everything for people to see that. Do you see, is there any downside, anything that we should be concerned about, you know, on, on all of these, or slowdowns, or attorneys, you know, not really liking it, or, you know, your thoughts on that?
So this is in line with the current policy that's happening with all of their departments right now. This is something that we didn't want to do, but I think it's incumbent upon us as leaders of Buncombe County to step up and say that we've got to start shutting things down. These are policies we started putting together a couple of weeks ago, and we decided that was important, we pulled the trigger on this, and I think Buncombe County needs to lead, and we need to tell folks that this virus is real, and we need folks to start staying home, and if we can do things online, we should. And that's what my office is trying to do.
Well, as long as they can call, I mean, I don't, so I guess you don't really see any downside. I can't think of any, you know, other than, I mean, as long as people can get ahold of you and get the work done, I think it's great. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
If you have any concerns, feel free to let me know.
I don't.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reisinger. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move.
All right, there's a motion in the second to suspend certain policies during the local state of emergency. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Yep, thank you. Okay, um, next up, quarterly settlements. Mike Free's got another one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is another item, requires no action of the board at this time. As you know, what we've been doing lately, last year or two, is to bring forward to the board on a quarterly basis settlements that have occurred either through the authority delegated to the Small Claims Committee up to $30,000 or other matters that this board has authorized settle. We thought it'd be best to bring this one forward because two are on the list that appear rather large. One, we disclosed in public several months ago, the $200,000 settlement with RAB builders. And the other is the settlement of the Michelle Smiley estate lawsuit. Ms. Smiley passed away October 17, methamphetamine overdose while in custody at the jail. That was a $2 million settlement. It's become public knowledge. The county paid for, it says $443,777 in the document, but the county did pay its $500,000 self-insured retention, the other being outside attorney's fees. So if there's any other questions, be glad to try to answer them, but there's no action required.
All right, thank you very much for the information.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next up is the school-to-justice partnership, and we have Judge Calvin Hill here to talk to us about this item. Thank you so much for being with us, Judge.
Thank you for having me, Judge. Commissioners, thank you. The year 2020 has brought a substantial change to the way we deal with 16 and 17-year-olds in our criminal justice system in North Carolina. We recently became the last state in the union to agree that 16 and 17-year-olds should not be treated as adults in the criminal justice system. These children will be treated as children and have their cases processed in the juvenile system when all other efforts fail. Our court systems, law enforcement, and schools across the state are coming to the conclusion that students are harmed even with the slightest contact with our courts. While there will inevitably be some students who will require court action, systems across North Carolina and the nation are making, are all making efforts to reduce student involvement with courts unless absolutely necessary. In keeping with these efforts, Buncombe County, through the courts, schools, and law enforcement has developed a school-to-justice partnership. This school-to-justice partnership is a group of community stakeholders, including school administrators, the law enforcement community, court system actors, juvenile justice personnel, and others, that develop and implement effective strategies to reduce law enforcement intervention in school-based misconduct. Oftentimes, many students' misconduct issues are addressed through exclusionary discipline practices such as suspension, expulsion, and referrals to the criminal justice system. But research shows that these responses are harmful and counterproductive. In North Carolina, youth of color are more than 2.5 times likely to be referred to juvenile court and 1.5 times more likely to be placed in secure confinement than white youth. Black students are 26% of the overall student population, but receive about 57% of these suspensions. They are more than four times as likely to be suspended or expelled as their white counterparts. Students with disabilities are 13% of the overall student population, but receive just short of 24% of short-term suspensions and 22.5% of long-term suspensions. They are more than twice as likely to be suspended as students without disabilities. Boys are roughly half of the total student population, but receive about 73% of short-term suspensions and 80% of long-term suspensions. Contact with the justice system correlates with higher recidivism. Contact with the juvenile justice system increases the likelihood that youth will reoffend. A North Carolina juvenile recidivism study shows an overall juvenile recidivism rate of 42%. That rate increased to 53% when juveniles were adjudicated in our juvenile court system. Additionally, youth whose cases were closed with no formal action, no court action, had a recidivism rate of just 31.5%, substantially below the overall rate. Rates of reoffending increase with deeper involvement in our criminal justice system. For example, confinement in a juvenile facility increases the probability that youth will be rearrested as an adult. Specifically, 37.6% of youth who were confined to a detention center, detention center, or youth development center were subsequently center were subsequently rearrested as adults. The arrest rate drops to about 19.2% for youth who were never confined. There is no way we can be serious about the success of our children and ignore the staggering statistical information concerning the negative effects that sending kids to court does have. This information that I just relayed to you, the statistical information came to us in 2019 from a toolkit that was distributed by the Chief Justice of the North Carolina Supreme Court. After much collaboration, we have reached here in Buncombe County what we believe is a workable, albeit a fluid document, which I believe consummates the relationship between the stakeholders and students. I say a fluid document because we have agreed to meet, at least biannually, to review our progress and tweak this agreement as needed. This is something we've worked on here in Buncombe County on and off for about three years, and we're having a signing ceremony tomorrow with all of the people that we need, who we believe should sign this document. I talked to the county manager. She believed that we should bring this before the commission, although it doesn't require any action on your part. We are asking Chairman Newman to sign on to this document as a show of support from this body, and we believe that this is a great show of support for our students here in Buncombe County, and we think it'll make a real difference in how our students are treated for in-school misconduct. Thank you for the time to present it to me. I'll entertain questions if you got it.
Great. Thank you so much, Judge Hill. I was, I was asked to sign this letter. A lot of other local officials have signed it. I'm very supportive of it, and I just thought it would be good for the whole commission to be, to just hear the information, because I think it's, it's, a lot of good work is being done here, but also just to confirm that the board is supportive of this. So I think if we're going to do a motion, it would be to basically authorize the chair to sign, to sign the agreement. Any questions or discussion or motion?
I move that we authorize you to sign the agreement, the chair.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much, Judge Hill. Appreciate your, your work.
Chairman, the manager told me I probably should bring that document with me tonight because she didn't know whether you or her would make it to the ceremony tomorrow with everything that's going on with this opioid thing. So I do have that document just in the event of one signing.
If you'd like for me to sign it, I'd be happy to go ahead and do that right now, just to make sure in case everyone doesn't arrive in the same place. Do you want me to walk over and do that now?
Can I approach?
Sure, yeah, go free.
I can't believe you missed that. I was dying to say approach your bench.
That's what I was thinking, the same thing, Jim.
My one chance.
Yeah, the way.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Calvin, thanks. We started, I know how long you've been going with this, because I was even on the school board years ago.
You had some problems down there.
Right, I remember. Yeah, thanks. That's a, it's, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, they've been years to get this.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 2020 audit contract and engagement letter with Clifton Larson Allen LLP, and Don Morn will present this item.
Good evening again. So CLA, Clifton Larson Allen, has provided the county with the engagement letter and our audit contract for the upcoming fiscal audit. The engagement letter outlines the scope of services, same as previous two years. This will be the third year of our contract. Contract price is $128,295. In their original proposal, three years ago, they estimated that the cost would be about $122,000, so they weren't too far off, considering the amount of work they've done for us. I think that's an actual reasonable cost for the audit. And as soon as we get this signed, then we will start working on getting them scheduled, getting them in here, and away we go again.
Very good. All right. Commission, any questions, discussion? Or a motion?
All right.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the FY 2020 audit contract and engagement letter with Clifton Larson Allen LLP. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is a resolution in support of North Carolina Department of Transportation projects slated for construction. And Tim's, is Tim Love presenting this, or Michael Frue? Michael Frue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, generally when the Department of Transportation is expected to do construction in a county jurisdiction, they ask that the local board approve and just give their okay. Please proceed with the construction project. So this one is for construction of the Acceleration Lane at US 74A at exit 53A from I-40. They want to put in $1,288,000 worth improvements for that acceleration lane. They're planning to put in a roundabout at Kane Creek Road and Mills Gap Road. That'd be a $1,901,778 project. And finally, the third project, a left-turn lane at NC 191 and Brevard Road. They're looking to put a right-turn lane off Brevard Road onto Clayton, and a right-turn lane off Clayton onto Brevard Road, and also put in a traffic signal. So that's just over a half million dollars, $515,000. They're asking for a resolution of your support for these projects.
Can I ask one question? And maybe I've just not kept up with all these in my head, but, you know, not all DOT projects like this come to the board to get a, kind of a, an affirmation of support. So why, I guess I'm a little unclear, why are these and not and not other projects that seem kind of similar to these?
I can't answer that. I do know that it's, it can be sometimes hit or miss, but I know that there's new local folks in the, in the DOT office locally, and I think that's the standard they would like to do with all these type of projects.
Okay. Well, I don't, if, we might just be able to kind of look into that. I think these are fine projects, but I just, you know, in my sense, serving on the NPO, there's just dozens of projects that happen all the time that are like this, that normally don't come to the board. So I just, anyway, I'm just asking the question if we could.
We'll look into that.
Try to understand what, what the criteria are for why they, why they bring some and not others, and what the plan is going forward. Yeah, okay.
I'm particularly glad, though, that these are, that were, these are come, come tonight so that we know. And I know that Commissioner Presley has extremulated, and anybody that tries to take that shortcut, that the left-hand turn lane from 191 onto Clayton Road, and the, a red light there. I mean, that's, that is.
It's a problem.
Oh, that's, that's wonderful. That is wonderful. And all the others are too, but, but.
All right. Is there a motion to support the resolution of support?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Frue. Okay, next up, resolution authorizing the execution of a non-warranty deed for 27 Chatham Road.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, about 25 years ago, the county commissioners conveyed this property, 27 Chatham Road. It's in that knot of neighborhood between Merriman Avenue and UNCA. In that deed to the gentleman, it was a non-warranty deed at the time. He was a good taxpayer for over 25 years. He recently passed away. His sole heir is trying to sell the property now, and they found a glitch. The title insurance company noticed that there was a discrepancy in the, in the deed that the county did to the gentleman some 25 years ago. And so to fix that problem, we'd ask the board to do a corrective deed. This is a new non-warranty deed to correct that issue.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of a non-warranty deed for property located at 27 Chatham Road.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We took the occupancy tax and local emergency items off the agenda. So next up is a budget amendment for a local, for the, for the local state of emergency declaration. That's already been adopted. Jennifer Barnett's here to talk to us about it.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, again. In response to our public health needs and following last week's declaration of the local state of emergency, we are bringing forward to you a request to amend the general fund budget in preparation for expenditures specific to addressing public safety and health of our community. Our initial proposal was for $250,000 as increases to the general fund budget. I will outline for you, so as of today, necessary associated expenditures or obligations for items or services total about $130,000. These items are for such purchases for personal protective equipment, takeout containers for school meal sites, some additional contract services for emergency coordination. So those are some of the types of expenditures that we can continue to anticipate, to need to purchase. The finance director and I had a conversation earlier. At a minimum, we would recommend $500,000. The plan, you can see, it's generalized, so you adopt, if you're, if you'll remember that you adopt your budget at a functional level. Our initial proposal split funding at that highest level, so at the function that enables us the ability to move budget within that function to the areas of spending, your highest areas of spending. Initially, we're anticipated to be in your public safety function and your human services function. We had further discussion with the county manager today, and I would recommend that we additionally split some of that funding to our general government function. So our general services department resides there, or IT, just so that it grants them the opportunity to go ahead and expend necessary dollars and have funding available in those functional areas. So our recommendation right now would be a minimum of $500,000 that we would split, and I can go through that recommended split, but would open that to you all for discussion and any kind of proposal for an additional or other funding amount.
All right, thank you.
So question? The, do we need to put another ordinance in here for, the ordinance says 250?
Right. Our conversation has been if that we can address that and get it adopted into the minutes, I'm able to provide to the clerk an amended actual ordinance that will reflect the conversation here today, and that can be what the chairman signs.
So when we, when we vote for this, what do we, how do we need to do that?
Just move to approve for the amount requested, and he'll show in the minutes.
But, but say, put $500,000 into motion so that it's crystal clear that it's the, what we're talking about now, not what's in the staff report that was published last week.
I move that we approve for $1,200,000.
Second. So in that, if I can make the request so that we have it actually outlined
in the function, in our functional areas, do you want to do that, Avril, or?
That'd be fine.
Okay. So our recommendation would be $350,000 in the public safety function, $75,000 for the human services function, and general government, $75,000, totaling $500,000. And your offset would be appropriated fund balance.
Do the people who made in second of the motion support inclusion, inclusion of those details in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific.
So that's, those specific numbers will go into the, into the minutes as the motion?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go right ahead.
Oh, just in the event there are some folks tuning in, I'm not sure if there are or not out there, but if we could have maybe just a word or two, Ms. Pinder, about just the broad, general types of things you think these expenditures might go to support in the days and weeks to come? Just, just, I think, we briefly just had an opportunity to visit the Emergency Operations Center this afternoon, and the caliber of work underway is tremendous, and I think many of our community members would be heartened by that and have some of their most immediate questions answered, just knowing the level of preparation that's happening, and knowing that the kinds of things that funds like this will be directed towards in terms of the comprehensiveness of planning, and, and just to acknowledge particularly our fellow commissioner, who's doing double duty right now, and thank you for your, for your leadership in both those capacities.
The type of things, as Jennifer mentioned, would be protective equipment. We need masks, we need gowns, we need cleaning equipment. So we have, we have found a contractor that can supply those, so we're buying those in bulk. We've also partnered with our school systems, and they need some supplies as well. And since there's no state budget in plan, we are holding that now in case we do get reimbursement. So we're looking at supplies to help deliver meals to our community. We're also talking contractors. As we mentioned before, we have not set up an EOC, so we're training. We had to bring some trainers into fire department, his sup and south. But we also brought in the EOC manager as well to help with some of that, helps with guidance. So professional services would be one thing we're looking at. The other thing that we're looking at standing up are places that we can have and house indigents if we need to do that, or quarantine folks. We need to have MLUs in place, and if we need to pay for that. So we do have, we want some funds available that we can do those kind of things.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mine, mine's more of a, so you say we spent $130,000 so far? It, I'm just going to ask, it's $500,000. I mean, it's been a, it's been a week, two weeks that we've done? Is that going to be enough?
So the intent, the intent is we're spending up in the early stages, and if we do see that, we have a two-week, we'll come back to our commission and amend that. But that would be the intent, is that we're doing a fast spend up right now, and we don't know that was, that we're going to maintain that spend rate.
I would just add, though, since I think, you know, this is, this is an unprecedented public health challenge that we're facing. A lot's at stake. I think, you know, how we respond now is going to make a real difference in how it plays out. So if there are other needs, I think, you know, I think I speak for everyone when saying, come to us and tell us what you need.
Right.
To mount the most effective response that we can provide to protect public health and safety.
Right.
And also to just help the, the residents of our county, you know, we're going to get through this, but I think the things we do will determine, you know, how well we get through this, and how quickly we get through this. So, so there are going to be things that we are going to need to do that, that we don't even know about yet, right?
Correct.
Because we've never faced this particular kind of challenge. So as, as, as the plan takes greater, you know, shape, and we know what the needs are, let us know, you know, we can reconvene this commission. We have a meeting every other week, is our regularly scheduled meeting, but we can convene this commission as needed if there are additional resources that are needed between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting. So just, just let us know what we can do to, you know, to, to put the resources into, into the things that need to be happening.
Thank you for that support.
And even if they're, even if they're, you know, some of these are going to be very much outside of the kind of core governmental services that we're used to investing, and we're going to need to do things that are, that are likely different than we've done before. So let's not be constrained by just sort of how we've always done things before in light of how unique this challenge is.
Thank you. We will monitor the spend rate, and we'll bring that back as we think we're burning, we call it the burner rate, so as we're burning through it, we'll come back.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, but stay there, because we've got two more now. Let's see. First is a budget amendment for Dogwood Trust grant funding.
Yes, and I do believe the first one that was on is on your agenda, references two particular amounts that have been awarded as grants from the Dogwood Health Trust. The first one is, is in the amount of $21,600 in support of the 2020 census. These dollars will be used to purchase community center kiosks across Buncombe County in an effort to increase participation in the census. The second award is $18,300 to recreation services to support retrofitting and enhancing inclusive, multi-generational play space at the Charles D. Owen Park in Swanonoa. So we are requesting to, the ability to accept those grants, and then to be able to establish the budgets relative to those grants. And one, in the grants fund, the $21,600 for the US census, in the grants fund. Tim Love, who is not Tim Love, who is not here this evening.
Actually, he is, he's hiding in the back.
Was not. So, we put that in the grants fund. It enables him to cross fiscal years if he has a need to make the purchase of those kiosk in one year, one fiscal year or the other. And then in conversation with Josh O'Connor, he is going to make every effort to expend those funds and to put all of, all of these into play in the current fiscal year. And so, we are requesting that amendment to the general fund.
All right, so do we need two motions? One to accept the grants and then second to approve the budget amendment?
Yes, please.
All right, is there a motion to accept the grants?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and finally, a budget amendment for Dogwood Trust grant, community-based disposal.
Yes, and I am checking in. Amy Upham is here to present some intro information relative to that and then we'll, we'll come back and wrap that up with the request for the budget amendment.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for hearing this and for having me. I don't know if the PowerPoint is up or not, I can't see it, but I will just start talking. So, really happy that Buncombe County is leading on so many public health fronts right now and one of them is going to be hopefully safe syringe disposal. So, in 2019, we received a harm reduction grant. Ah, there it is. And we started our disposal efforts. So, we installed 16 bathroom units at various locations. We gave syringe handling training as part of a harm reduction training to over 400 community members. And we distributed information via brochure and through bus ads all across the city and county. There were 22 buses that had ads up for six months. And we also purchased six large disposal kiosks, which we have not yet installed and is the content of today's meeting. So, we did a lot of research on what other cities were doing because no city in North Carolina, as far as I can see, outside of the Cherokee Reservation, which is not a city, but has instituted community-wide disposal programs. But a lot of other cities across the country have. So, New York City, Toronto's in Canada, San Francisco, San Diego, Buffalo, New York, Atlanta, Georgia. And because of all the needle litter, we thought we should engage in this as well. So, community-based disposal units reduced needle litter by 95% and this is research out of Montreal, Canada, within 200 meters, or that's 200 yards, like a football field of that unit. I consulted personally with Erie County, New York, which has the largest number of kiosks up. They have 76 in Erie, which is Buffalo, New York. And they've been doing this for 10 or 15 years and they did it as part of not only cleaning up needles that people who use drugs use, but also for diabetics. And this is where we got a lot of our technical assistance. But we also read research from the cities I mentioned and a lot of them not only do community disposal units, but also street sweep teams. So, it took us about a year, but we're here where we have a city-county MOU now. We're going to donate, the proposal is to donate these six units to the city of Asheville. The reason we're going to do this is to waive the co-insurance to install them. The city of Asheville will actually install and maintain the units, but we will replace them if needed. And we will oversee the collection of those units. So, a lot of research also went into where should these units go? There's only six of them and we have a lot of places in the county that need these. But this is a pilot program that we hope to expand, given the success. So, we got input from, most importantly, Green Works, which is doing this on a regular basis, and the Drug Enforcement Agency, which knows where all the hotspots are. The APD liaison there, Sergeant Escobar, was the one who helped us identify some of these locations. We also worked with Asheville City Sanitation and Public Works, Greg Schuler, for some recommendations. We received a request by Episcopalview Community because some of their children were getting stuck with needles. And I did personally stakeholder engagement at Deverview and Episcopalview to make sure that they would be okay with these units onsite. I also went around to all of the businesses over the holidays on Haywood Road, all of the restaurants and in downtown Asheville to distribute naloxone kits and personal disposal units for their areas. And I engaged with the business owners when I went there to ask what they would think of, of these units being there. I will say every single business owner is in support of these units being up. Most business owners do not want it on their property. So, this is why it's great that we have this collaboration with the city of Asheville to put it on city property. Lastly, we were awarded through a random conversation I had with somebody at Dogwood, a safe syringe collection grant of $24,364. It started in, at the very end of February, but part of this time has been trying to find a contractor because part of the grant is to sub-award for collection. And we've identified that subcontractor as Sunrise Recovery and Wellness as they also staff our SSP, so this will be part of syringe services for the county. The grant covers those endpoint disposal bins, which we will put up. They're 96 gallon tubs, just like they have at the transfer station. We'll have two of them at 40 Cox, near the loading station. They won't be public access. That's where our sub-award agency will come in to assist people in that disposal. Dogwood is committed to helping us with a sustainability plan for this collection. And lastly, of course, we've done some community engagement, but we need to do some more. So, I'm working with the city of Asheville and Buncombe County Community Engagement Teams to attend certain meetings. Unfortunately, I had some scheduled for March that COVID-19 is going to put off the docket, but we'll pick those back up as soon as we can. The Billard Roundtable, the Housing Authority Association meetings, those kinds of places. We're going to continue to do harm reduction education. One of the neat things in having Sunrise do the collection is that they're also agreeing in their contract to do education around disposal. We're going to continue to print out our materials, work with the care team, which is the county Substance Use Task Force, to evaluate how this is going. How are these six units doing, are people using them? We're going to weigh the needles at the endpoint collection. We've already purchased the, the weighing mechanism for 40 Cox. And then we've just updated the website for buncombecounty.org backslash safer. We'll update it again once they're installed. We had hoped installation would be in April. That's what the city committed to, but again, with COVID-19, all things are potentially delayed, but we're hoping to get them up as soon as possible. The next steps, like I said, continued community engagement. We do need to identify two other locations. I think we have one identified through the county park system, but we really need to put one up on South Tunnel Road. And it's very difficult, there's no city property near that bridge, there's no county property. I've talked to Walgreens Pharmacy, Ingalls Pharmacy. Pharmacies in a lot of these cities are where we work together with, for this effort, but their corporates keep saying no. So, the stores want them, corporate, national says no. I've talked to the mental health agencies on Tunnel Road. If anybody has any suggestions, let me know, but I'm saving one of those units for South Tunnel Road. And, and then we begin contracting process, which has already started those negotiations. We have an intern from Warren Wilson also working on a needs assessment of rural Buncombe County because none of the locations right now are identified for rural Buncombe and we need to know what, what their needs are. Right now, he, they have switched to virtual, a virtual needs assessment. They had worked up to visit different churches to do the needs assessment, but that's not going to happen right now. So, that concludes my information that I have and open to any questions.
You'd mentioned a potential, that a county park was the potential location, which park?
Hominy Creek. And that's a suggestion of the county park system.
So, have you received concern of, it's just so many places where needles are found. I mean, I can tell you, you know, I mean, I know, I'm not going to mention the places, the businesses, but,
Yep.
you know, out in Canlar, there's just different places.
Yep.
So, I think if people have any concern at all for this, which may be coming from businesses that doesn't want it in front of their place, they're thinking people are going to come and use in the front of their place and dispose their needles there.
Right.
So, that, that of course is a, would be a concern for the community.
Sure.
And I'd like to know what, you know, conversations you're having around that.
Yep.
And I think at another time, you know, we really need to continue to look at, you know, what are we doing to, 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 to help those, you know, that, you know, don't want to use those needles anymore?
Sure.
And to reduce the scale of the problem, which again is a, it's, it's COVID-19 on its own, right?
Yeah.
And we need to be compassionate as we look at all of that. But if you could just, if you could just speak to that and, again, how many did you say?
We have six. We have six, yeah. And I'll, I'll detail where those are, most of those are going to be.
That would be great.
Yeah. Haywood Street Congregation has agreed to have it outside of their church on the city sidewalk, 40 Cox Avenue with Health Department. We're going to encourage people who use needles for any reason to use these units. Haywood Road, we couldn't actually find a place on Haywood Road, but there's an easement on State Street near Haywood Road. And that's not directly in front of any business. Episcopalview Apartments, and again, they had requested one specific to children getting stuck. And then Hominy Creek Park. And I believe those are ones we have identified. We're waiting on a South Tunnel location.
And, you know, State Street, for example, what will we be doing to make sure that the residents know that, that there'll be one located? Because State Street's a unique street.
Yep.
It's got a, you know, a little bitty church that's been there forever.
Yep.
You know, and just, there's just a slice of, you know, all kinds of different
Yeah.
cute little residences and people down there. And so, and I've heard a lot of concern in, in that area regarding, you know, drug use and needles and, you know, from businesses and individuals. And, and so, I think if we can present this properly to that neighborhood, it'd probably be okay.
Yep.
We're going to need to address some of those things. But just your thoughts on that and that's all the questions I have.
Okay. Yeah, West Asheville is definitely a particular situation. I've been to the West Asheville Business Association meeting and talked with a lot of the business owners there. We do intend to present there again. Also open to presenting at the West Asheville Neighborhood Association. And I've spoken with the West Asheville Library about potentially hosting an event there just to educate the public. Like I said, when I went around to the businesses on Haywood Road, they were very open to it and wanting it there. The city of Asheville also forwards me personally all of the resident complaints in that area and I answer them. And so, people are very excited when I say that we have a unit that will be dedicated to that area.
I have a, I have a question. So, you, you have six.
Yep.
Is there any chance, I mean, because you got five of them going in downtown Asheville and I know that we've got, I attended a meeting in Barnersville and their playground out there, that one of the biggest things was the needles that were all over the playground in the big Ivy community.
Yes.
So, is there any chance to get more? I mean, I know, I live in Swanonoa, we go, you see needles all, you know, so.
Yep.
Is there a chance to get more?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, if, if this pilot is successful, which I anticipate it being, they're not very expensive. They're $2,000 each. And like I said, the city has waived the co-insurance, so it's really no extra cost to us. I've even talked with our subcontractor about the fact that the units will probably expand in the future and they're, they have 20 hours a week, so they'll be able to collect for more units.
So, I'd say that was my last question. Most Commissioners know that's usually just not true, but, so, do you have data that we'll be able to share? You're talking about the success within 250 yards, is that what you said?
200, yep.
250 yards. I think, you know, sharing the success of, you know, what does it do to reduce harm in the neighborhood? How does it help the neighborhood? You know, and I think the neighborhoods are going to want to, want to know that. And, and I'm assuming the information is out there from these other places that have used those. And, you know, is it possible to find communities that are similar to West Asheville in these other, you know, you know, larger cities or whatever? And you can bring that information back to us maybe sometime?
Yeah, I, I will say I had a lot of phone conversations with Erie County and Buffalo has also different suburbs and areas around the city. Some like West Asheville, the Elmwood District, I used to live there, is one of them. And really by partnering with the pharmacies is, is where they got their best bang because then they can sell it as universal syringe disposal, which it really should be anyway, right? So, I have been reaching out very, very strongly to pharmacies and I'm, I'm really trying to find a willing partner on that end.
Thanks.
All right, terrific. So, we need three motions here. The first is to accept the grant, the second is to authorize the interlocal agreement and the third is to approve the budget amendment. So, is there a motion to accept the grant?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to authorize the interlocal agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
All in favor, please say.
I'm a second.
Okay, thank you. It was kind of like both at the same time. I guess, I thought one of them would get one of them. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much for your great work on this project. We do look forward to hearing more about it. I think it's going to do a lot of good. I, I mean, I hear from people, we all do, all the time about just, we're not doing this, it's in someone's yard, it's on the sidewalks, in the playground. So, this is, this is great. All right. We now come to board appointments. So, we've got a number of appointments to make. Let's just start from the top on our list as they're published. The first is the African-American Heritage Commission. And we have one vacancy. We had two excellent applicants for this board. I, I think I'd like to just start down on Amanda's side and just, if we could just go through and just identify which applicant you're supporting.
Okay. Aaron Griffin, senior.
Aaron Griffin.
Aaron Griffin.
I'm also for Aaron Griffin.
Aaron Griffin.
Aaron Griffin.
Aaron Griffin.
All right, great. All right. The next is the Agricultural Advisory Board. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bruce Snelson.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He was our only applicant for that one. All right, next we come to the Downtown Commission. Here we have four applicant, well, first Ruth Summers is up for a reappointment. So, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ruth Summers.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Ruth Summers is appointed. Now, we have one other vacancy and three, three applicants for that one position. So, again, I think.
Start on that side.
We'll start over here on Mr. Penland's side and just identify which of the applicants you prefer and we'll go down and whoever gets the most nods will, will appoint that one.
Victoria Edge.
Brian Moffett.
Brian Moffett.
Brian Moffett.
Brian Moffett. Victoria Edge.
Victoria Edge.
Okay. I believe Mr. Moffett got four and Ms. Edge got three. So, did you, does that sound correct to you Lamar? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. All right, now we come to the Land Conservation Advisory Board. And here we have six applicants for three vacancies. So, here, I'd like to ask each Commissioner to identify the three members that you would like to appoint. And again, we'll, we'll add them all up and whichever of the applicants receives the most levels of support will be our person. So, let's go back over and we'll start on your side, Amanda. Who are your, and go kind of slow so that we can make sure we're kind of getting this correct, okay?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Robert Turner. April Hesacker. And Jacob Wiseman.
Same for me, same three. April Hesacker. Douglas Hattaway. Don Yelton.
Okay, I'm for Robert Turner, April Hesacker and Jacob Wiseman.
Robert Turner, April Hesacker, Jacob Wiseman.
Robert Turner, Douglas Hattaway and Don Yelton.
Robert Turner, Douglas Hattaway, Don Yelton.
All right, I believe that Robert Turner or April Hesacker and Jacob Wiseman each received four or more votes. Is that consistent with your count? I've got, I've got Robert Turner at six, April Hesacker at, I have five, but maybe she got more than four and Wiseman at four. Is that consistent with yours Lamar? Okay. All right, so Jacob Wiseman, April Hesacker and Robert Turner all got majority support. Okay, Historic Resources Commission. I'll make a motion to appoint Emily Kite.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And for Health and Human Services Board, I'll make a motion for Martha Sailors.
Second. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any opposed? All right. Uh, thank you all. Thank you to all the applicants for these, uh, for applying for these boards and commissions.
Um, Mr. Chair. Could I just, um, I know I listed on the actual, um, handout that I gave you for the JCPC. We don't have to do that now, but we, you asked for us to mention that at this meeting.
Juvenile, um,
Say the full name.
Crime prevention council.
Appointments.
Correct.
It's a commission appointment.
So we had suggested to Commissioner Penland,
Pass the torch.
That he take that.
You interested?
Chairman, I, I told you I'd email you and I'm sorry, but we've been a little busy, but I'll do that. I'll take that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Anthony Penland.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you for being willing to do that. And Jasmine, thank you for serving on that.
Yeah, it's a great commission. Thank you, Commissioner Penland, for stepping in.
All right. Um, we now come to public comments. The time limit for individual comment is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during public comment? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I see I'm the only one in the whole crowd today that's a private citizen out there. The rest of them are staff. That's amazing, isn't it? Anyway.
That's smart.
Judge Hill brought up some very good, interesting news for the last three years he's been working on and the school system and all this. But let me tell you, interesting fact, and I'm not talking about fiction or fake news. What he's presenting is not old news to me. It's new news, or I mean, it's old news, it's not new news. Things that are going on with what the judge is talking about, he can tell you a personal story between me and him that I brought a case to him when he was a lawyer 15 years ago. And he was appointed to represent the child. But he didn't have the credentials to even represent the child. Cause he's a criminal attorney. And it wasn't a criminal case. And he said so. But he said, I'll do my best to let the judge know, and he did. And the kid was, uh, put on probation and sent back to school. But the point is, I'm making here is, this is not Judge Hill's. This is not any judge up here that I'm talking about in a personal way. It's that they don't know what the school law is. When you talk about special education, you're talking about public law 94, 142, a federal law that started in 1975. And this law is very clear on what the school is supposed to do. And I've got 32 years' experience in this, and I'll debate anybody, school board lawyers, the judges, or any of them on this issue. And the reason I'll say that is because most attorneys won't even touch this because they don't know. And they don't make no money off of it. But there's one thing that they do make money off of. They make money off of the taxpayers. If we're going to clean up the system, the school board over the city and, and the county needs to get their act together. Number one, we got teachers coming out of college and we got the Buncombe County full of them. And nothing personal about them in a personal way. It's a business. They do not know how to handle kids, period. They know how to read a book, and that's it. They know how to teach. They know how to do that. They don't know about kids. Special education kids is a different subject. A lot of these kids that are going out are special needs kids. He gave some good facts. But the, the problem with the facts that he give is not really altogether the facts. The fact is, there are more of these kids all over than any that he is numbering. There are much more in the system. These kids are not getting the benefit of their right in the due process. And I'll explain some later. I'd like to talk to the county manager about this and update her on some things too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else? All right. Um, we have a closed session. Uh, but before I do that, actually, let me read the announcements. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is April 7th at 3:00 PM. Uh, that'll be our pre-meeting, uh, in 200 College Street, room 326. That same day, April 7th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold our next regularly scheduled meeting at 200 College Street, room 326. Uh, we do have a need for a closed session, I believe. Is that still the case? Okay. Uh, Mr. Frew, can you talk to us about the purpose?
Yes, sir. In one item, uh, Mr. Love was able to scare up a little bit of information from DOT.
Okay.
There's five types of projects that fall into the criteria that require local government support. So those are those with public access funds, small construction, statewide contingency, economic development, and high-impact, low-cost projects. These three projects fall into the high-impact, low-cost, which is relative. They were over $250,000.
Thank you.
And they're open to, if you need a more consistent process, they're open to that discussion.
That's a great answer. Thank you so much for getting that information.
Sure. And yes, sir, there, we do have a, uh, need a motion to go into closed session to discuss two economic development matters pursuant to 143, 318, 11A4 to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other business in the area. We just anticipate direction from the board.
All right. Mr. Belcher's made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Frew, second, second about Mr. Whitesides. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, and we don't expect to take any action. When we come back out from closed session, we'll simply adjourn the meeting.